Casey, do you hear us?
I do now, yep.
Good, you didn't hear us before now?
Nope, this is the first time.
Glad that mute button worked. We weren't talking about you.
Not even for the water.
I know, I was gonna say isn't it like.
It's in. Two that for one of them didn't exist yet. Yeah, no, it's alright, I'm not happy about that. Fix that. Fix the problem.
That's issue with your.
Surprise.
Oh. Okay. I was like. I'm not. Yeah.
Calling the um meeting, regular city council meeting of June fourth twenty fifty five to order, which is seven oh two. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And. Okay, Mayor Smith, you. Deborah Adams here. Aaron Hansen is absent, Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Mike Nicholson. That's him. Wendy Rainey here. Kathy Sherman is absent, Dave Zastro.
Here.
That is.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the regular agenda, um are there any amendments, any suggested? Changes? Um hearing no objection, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You just. Thanks. Um disclosures of conflict of interest and exportate communication, does anyone have any conflicts to declare? And. Communications by practitioners from visitors, we don't have any guest speakers but scheduled. Um if anyone in the audience wants to make a comment, we invite people to come speak or. And try to keep it to three minutes. Okay. I don't see any chairpersons represented as well, we do have it. We'll get to that, uh so approval of consent calendar.
To make new vote sheets, but um unless anybody's coming anything, I will call the roll on the consent calendar. Deborah Adams.
Yes.
Aaron Hansen is absent, Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Nicholson is absent, Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman is absent, Dave Zastro.
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Great, thank you. So consideration of bids, we don't have any, so that brings us to reports of officers. And I included a short mayor's report in the packet and. I have been in touch with Senator Murkowski's staff about having a meet and greet, she did agree to do that on Sa- uh Sunday morning. Sunday, June eighth, ten thirty to eleven thirty. And I'm working on seeing if we can do that at the commons area at the grade school. Cause I don't know, I I I sometimes it seems typically we would have one here, I don't know if. If it would be completely cleaned up after the night before. So that made me hesitate to uh go for the Cordova Center. And I think the commons, you know, that can hold a fair number of people.
Is this for. For Murkowski? Okay.
Yeah, 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 and so I don't know, Susan, do you maybe wanna post that a quorum of council might be present?
Yes, I will do that as soon as is that done.
I would.
Time, but not location.
The times for sure, the location I'm still.
Okay, and you talked to the school today, I think you called the soup's office.
I did call and I need to, I I didn't understand that they were waiting for me to fill out the form.
Okay.
Tell me if we could actually do it there, so I'm gonna send it for Sunday morning, yeah.
Sounds good, yeah.
Yeah. Sun.
Yeah.
Mayor Smith. If I mean, I'm only saying this, the the commons area of the elementary is great, it's a beautiful building. Um if we're wanting some attention, would the high school be a better avenue to host this, so she can see the condition of that building, just saying.
I have to.
I can't remember Adams has a response to.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, um the National Guard is in the building.
Okay, I do think they're not. Using that space at all while they're there so far, I saw that on the school calendar.
Yeah, the building's off limits, but.
The high school, yeah.
Yes, but you know, you could mention the reason why you're we're not at the high schools because the high school has had the resort to breathe the air over the summer.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
Perfect, just wanna take full advantage of how having the delegation in town, so. Whatever attention we can and for the needs that we have, so that's all.
Yeah.
We just don't have it.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty to eleven thirty. Sunday.
Yeah.
June eighth.
Yeah.
Alright.
And what's the best way, maybe people could email stuff to Susan, I mean, or I I I mean, we've talked about some of the things that as a community that we're concerned about the programs, you know, the. Essential Air Service and Head Start and Secure Roll Schools and NOAA and things like that, I mean, I could.
Sure, if everybody wants each of the council members or any.
Mm-hmm.
People from the public want to email me, I can compile it all before Sunday.
That'd be great, just so that like we're all coordinated and we have kind of a master list that we can all be. Singing all the same sheet of music from.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
Yeah, and certainly staff, if you wanna. Chime in.
Interesting, yeah.
Be great if we had a new pool, if you wanna, you know. Yeah. Okay. Any other? And I was saying, I I saw that on the report, I I took the liberty of asking her for that because we, I didn't think to ask in the last meeting and we wouldn't be meeting until today and I thought that was too soon to. Um get on her schedule, so.
Uh Mayor Smith, I just wanted to say thank you for your response to the Court Cordova Times reporting, thank you for doing that and that. Is very helpful and hopefully helps any of the viewership of that uh subscription, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I go back there, thanks for making it clear what was happening at that point.
I did also just write a letter to the editor, I don't know when if it will get printed, but. That's a little more pointed. We'll see when it gets out, um yeah, any more, can I answer any questions or?
Yeah, I have just the mug up for the uh breakwater and build water, um so it sounds like you've been working with staff on some information for by the public during that.
Well, um for that, yes, um Amanda has been. Amanda and Colette have been working on that and so they pulled together some uh aerial images so that we could identify to folks exactly which parts we were talking about. And um yeah, so I think we'll have big prints of those put, be able to, that we can hang up on the wall.
Um I I think we were talking about putting on the on the on the screen.
Okay. I think it might, if we could have prints that we could put on the wall around the room, cause not everybody's gonna. I just think that we could do both, yeah.
That's all they could.
Yes.
And has the survey been been developed, probably is excellent process.
Now, the survey, Amanda and Colette developed.
Survey's out. Well, the uh not to chime in too soon, but uh both the survey and the announcement about the meeting have already been published uh on the city Facebook page, I believe in I. I'm going on this, I think it's also been on the webpage. Um so yeah, I mean, we would encourage you as council members to share that information, um you know, feel free to share posts to other groups that you may be in, spread the word. But yeah, the city has, you know, started the process of uh publishing both the survey and the announcement for the meeting.
Great.
And it, I think it went out in that um public notice email service that you use?
I'll have to double check with Emily, but I'm pretty certain that.
And maybe that will happen.
If it hasn't, it will.
Yeah, right, there'll be there'll be a couple of different messages and when I get the pin down the location for meeting with Murkowski, I will. Get in touch.
As hard for that to do that too.
Susan? Yeah.
Sure, sure, to me.
In the same, in the public notice emails service, yeah.
And I'm glad to hear uh you were describing this in your report to be sure that more. Presentings to the public that they take it, what is happening as a whole, or at the other locations that are potential recreational officials, and we're not just hyper focused on the lot, it sounds like that is your.
Yeah, and I think too that there's a little bit of misinformation going around about um about the lot itself, like I've heard. I know of one person that is saying, you know, that lot was never intended to be used, it was always intended to be public and I thought. That's not exactly true, I mean, it it isn't where we are now, but it was created, it was created with a specific intention in mind, a specific use.
Yeah.
All in.
So so that kinda stuff is just important to say, just for the record, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So. Okay, thank you, alright, so then I think we can go on to. I can just.
Uh yeah, so. Uh obviously Sam's gone, so here I am, uh gonna do my best, uh she didn't have a ton to pass on for city management report, just uh. Things have kind of been um moving somewhat smoothly as uh so began, uh so the couple things I did want to just uh highlight is uh. Uh as of uh as of my last understanding, the DMV is planning to come to town on June twenty third. I do believe it's a multi-day visit, but uh I believe the first day of the of their appointments week, June twenty third. Um they they should be reaching out to individuals uh with more information, but we'll also be setting up the uh waiting area here. And then uh having some sort of us, some sort of setup where people will wait in one area, the people will process in another and. Rotate through everybody that signed up for that um during that pre-signup phase, so um. We will publish otherwise if we hear otherwise, but as right now, that is the date that has been set so far. Um. The old science center building, the request for proposals for that building has gone live. Um we did initially uh publish that as just request for proposals to lease the building. Uh we did hear from some people that, you know, there may be interest in the community to purchase the building, so we did uh publish an addendum that uh. The council may consider purchase um proposals. Um but we also did make it clear in the addendum that. Um while purchasing may be an option, it ultimately is up to the council to make that decision and based off of the. Communications that we had from the harbor commission, the planning commission and our understanding from the city councils. If we were to sell that location, uh long term, that building still does need to go away, so ultimately, we need to make sure that we're not selling off valuable harbor space. Um so they can be used for harbor specific uses. Um so that will close in about a month and we'll then move that through the process. Uh next is Second Street. Uh the lots on Second Street, the RFP, request for proposals for that. Will be uh published sometime mid-June, we're just waiting for a razor to come into town. Be able to review the lots and get us an appraisal back on what they think the uh potential market values for those lots. So we're just waiting on that information. Um the new impound lot, uh the construction of that has started, I don't know if you've been to the Bayler recently or not, you may have noticed there's been some dirt work going on behind the uh. Uh EVO's oil building. We virtually moved it right, so we are working on clearing that area out. Um there's not a specific schedule for what days that we've worked on, our contractor is just chipping away at it throughout the summer, we asked uh through our contract that it needs to be completed by September. And so that is the current schedule is, we will have a new impound lot created by September. Um another item, uh thought this was a good to bring up, so in the past, copper river watershed project is done invasive weed control throughout the community. Um I know that there was concerns about that in the past due to their use of pesticides. Um they are going to be restarting that project.
Design.
Or sorry, yes, they did.
I'm sorry.
Very, very generous herbicides, um um they are no longer using that uh program in Cordova. Um so we are meeting with them next week to talk about their uh manual removal program, which basically consists of either uh. Uh cutting seed heads, manually removing the plant, or doing a tarping option where they tarp the area off and then that actually has to stay for a few years while it completely killed the plant out. So uh we're working on, we're working with them to move forward on that, so the invasive weed control program will be uh starting back up again this year without the use of herbicides. Um. Tony made me say this. The uh the tub nuts are coming.
What?
Uh there is a uh group that is uh fond of the ranger tubs. And they are coming to Cordova for their uh annual meetup. Uh the twelfth to the fifteenth, we're expecting about fifteen to twenty tubs to show up in the harbor who will be here for a multi-day event.
June?
Yes, yeah, so I guess we'll have that next week.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so they'll be here soon, uh like the fifteen to twenty boats will be coming to town for that event. Um they've already set up a lot of activities uh around town, I know I think they're doing like a karaoke or music night or something with uh one of the bars or something like that, they're doing a. Uh prom or something like that, you know, they they have a bunch of things. So, yeah, so excited to see, you know, they they are developing harbor, they're very excited to come see it, so um yeah, so that that's coming up soon.
Tub nuts?
Tub nuts.
Was that not really the?
That is what Tony said. That's what they call.
Okay, as long as we're not offending them, like I said.
People would do parabola or call paranaps as well.
Yeah, um just sorry, I'll try to wrap this up, I've been dragging on, um two more items, um. We are going to have an additional food truck on the uh breakwater fill lot this summer, um it is a short-term lease, that's why it didn't come before you, it was a typical land disposal process, they're just, it's a. Couple months summer lease, um they came before the council before for their food truck approval, it's um it's it's big all eat.
Big all eat.
The, yeah, so they they.
Victor, yeah.
Um so he'll be, he'll be posting up on the breakwater, um so we'll have multiple food trucks down there, um which many people have been trying to push forward and get done for quite a while, so it's exciting to see that going on. And then I guess the last uh last item would be the uh the uh. Uh skater's cabin. Uh skater's cabin, we have the mug up. Um now forget the date, but last week, um we had the skater's cabin made uh mug up last Tuesday, if I remember correctly. Um it was fairly well attended, I mean, in terms of public meetings, um basically uh. The comments that we got from the uh people who came to the meeting, everyone seemed to be on the same line, everyone understands that. While skater's cabin is a historic structure and is an important structure of the community. It is time to move on to a new structure with new amenities and that is built in a way that accommodates ADA. Also deals with the drainage issues and just other little technical details of where the current cabins placed that need to be addressed. Um so it was, it was nice to see that of the people who showed up in person, there was a consensus among them that. While it is a, it is a sad loss to see that structure gone, it doesn't mean that we are losing skater's cabin, it's just we're moving on to an iteration of skater's cabin. Um so Samantha with the Parks Department, they just got approved with the program that they're going through for their crowdsourced funding. Um it hasn't gone live yet for people to actually start contributing, that will be coming soon. Um but just also wanna let everyone know that next Saturday on June fourteenth will be another public meeting for additional public feedback. Um for, you know, just. Get get ideas for what they'd like to see with that space, you know, we are still going to plan to put a cabin back. But there is opportunities to change and tweak things since we are moving on to a new situation, so. Um. With that, I.
And we'll get that advertised and that'll be at skaters, is that what you said?
Yeah, correct, that will, that will be located at skater's cabin on Saturday, Saturday, June fourteenth.
And when's the last, when is it gonna be closed officially?
July thirty first.
July thirty first is the last day, so uh reservations have already been shut down, um I think if there's still.
There's still.
If there's, if there is existing open days up to the thirty first, you can reserve those, but past July thirty first, um there will no longer be uh use of cabin.
And and can I, can you speak to my, my understanding, cause I've talked a little bit with Smith about this, um my understanding with some of the suggestions of rebuilding. The cabin isn't as simple as just replacing rotten logs. Rebuilding the cabin would be rebuilding pretty much the whole thing.
Yeah, you know, this is where I I hate to be Mister Bureaucrat.
Yeah.
But I mean, this is a public structure, is going to be used for public use. If you were just building it on your own property, yeah, go ahead, jack it up, put new locks in, rebuild the roof, do whatever you want, um. But it 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 is beyond that, I mean, the 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 roof does not need the snow load requirements, the bottom portion of the walls are completely rotten out, the other portion of the walls are questionable vests. It's in a pit, it has drainage issues, um. And so while, you know, if it were feasible. Yeah, anything's feasible with enough money. But it it is one of those situations where this is a public piece of property and it does need to meet. Current building regulations, including ADA requirements as well. Thanks.
Yeah, right, must be the, I been, I didn't, I had not understood until I talked to Samantha the other day about the drainage underneath.
Yes.
I mean, that just seems like. It's classic, right, you can't build anything on a poor foundation here, if so, yeah.
And I guess just also to add, um you know, when people do see the public campaign go live. I don't know how else to say this, they may be shocked by the um price that we're trying to get to. That price doesn't include volunteer labor, volunteer supplies, volunteer anything. While we understand the community is very passionate and we will most likely get many volunteers, both in the, you know, public coming out to help with the construction as well as contractors in town that want to assist in the building. We have to approach this, assuming we will get none of that. Because there is no contract signed, there's nothing signed, so we can't get to a point where, well, this is how much we need if we have volunteers. And then all that falls through and now no one gets a cabin, so we have to plan for. It all being done private, out of town, hired, brought in, that doesn't mean that's the plan.
Right.
But we need a plan for that.
Yeah.
And the great part about that is, and if we hit that goal and we can come in under. Then that money could be either used for additional amenities or be set aside in some sort of a um maintenance fund.
Maintenance and a reserve, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, that then allows us to make sure that we do maintain that building. So I just wanna make sure that that would, no, because people will, they will be shocked by the number that we're saying is the goal. So.
I think what's important, maybe, uh I'm sorry. Does anybody else, I I'm supposed to let people go first?
I did, did have one comment, um so I did wanna put it out there, having been on Parks and Rec for a good ten to fifteen years. Um this is not a new problem, the community seems to think that this is a new, brand new, oh my god, it's falling apart. We've been talking about skater's cabin in Parks and Rec for ten to fifteen years and nobody listened. This problem has been happening and has been coming for a long time. So all the people that sat on their couch and typed onto Facebook, oh, just fix it. We've been talking about this for ten fifteen years, where were you then, where were you when you could have just fixed a log in the back corner? So. Yeah, this is not a new problem. And now it's to the point where it's disintegrated and we need a new facility, a new building there, so yeah, just not a new thing. Time to listen to the city council meetings, time to go listen to your Parks and Rec commission, if you're that passionate about it, why weren't you in the audience when we were talking about it ten years ago?
It's difficult, I think.
Well, I'm I'm just, I mean, I'm sad to see the old building go. Um so I have lots of fond memories there, but I'm also excited to have a vision of what it could be. Um its replacement and and how it could really be a stellar. Facility for the community, so um I'm 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 trying to frame it as a positive, that we can make it the way we want.
Yeah, exactly, and I I I really think that's the most important part of the messaging that we put forward is. While the current structure may be going away, scat, skater's cabin is not, there will be a skater's cabin going forward, assuming we can get plenty then make all this happen.
Yeah.
But um like I said, we are not just tearing a building down and walking away, and that is not our intention, so.
And and I think that would be important for all of us to be making sure that when you start hearing that street talk, cause I've already heard it like, oh my gosh, it's being demolished and. Yeah, anyway.
Too many.
Yeah. So. Uh Councilmember Kinsman, did you have any comment?
Nope, I I attended on Tuesday and I agree with what Kevin said, it was relatively speaking, well attended and yeah, everyone was. Who was in attendance was in support of the vision of uh of that structure moving forward. Um I mean, I think the most questions I heard were timeline and obviously, I think there's a strong commitment to try to get it demolished this year. That was kind of the extent of any kind of commitment that could responsibly be given, which I thought was spot on. Um so I think that's just gonna be uh our narrative and any any of city staff narrative is to just speak to that, you're gonna see this go away. That doesn't mean it's gone forever, but again, I I was pleased with the attendance, so it is, it is something that's important to the community, so.
Audience for sure. Do you have a comment?
I miss, I I I don't, we had a a transcript meeting last night and um uh Parks Director joined us and I got a little sneak peek. Uh preview into some of the uh public uh material that's gonna be going out, speak at the really great information, I think spells it out really well. I think the intent there will be what we see by the public, so I look forward to all that.
Thank you, I was just kinda commenting earlier when you said people might be shocked about the price, I'm guessing that a chunk of that is site prep? You know, the people are picturing like, oh, you can put a building up for this demand, but it, but I don't think you can minimize what has to happen if you're talking about making it ADA accessible and address.
Exactly, and and that was something I was kind of was trying to expand on, but don't wanna get into too much detail, but yeah, and that that's for us coming along with the whole, you know. You wanna do something on your own property, do what you want, but. Like I said, there's drainage issues, the civil engineering alone, you know, it's not just a matter of make a flat pad and drop the building on it, you know, we really, if we do want this to last. Another almost one hundred years, cause this cabin has been have been rebuilt a couple times. But you know, the the existing cabins made it almost this long, if we wanna make sure the next cabin makes it as long, if not longer, then yeah, we need to make sure that we are properly looking into those. Those civil engineering drainage and uh foundation concerns that while they may have been looked at previously, obviously there was some sort of issue because we did build it in a way that. There are drainage issues, which has led us to this issue.
Yeah, great. Okay. Alright. Any, oh I I had one more question before you break in about that um the impound lot.
Yes.
Um you said there's dirt work going on behind that EVO's oil building, is there some kind of stream protection to make sure that that?
Yes, we do, uh we have the contractors put up uh steel barrier fencing and um I mean, I don't wanna say specifically, I think there's still a lot of that there also, but we did specifically talk with them about that. I've asked my uh crew, you know, this isn't necessarily a refuse project, but since they're the ones on site, I've asked them to look over that, so we are keeping an eye on that. It was put out recently that the current fence is looking a little wobbly, so we asked them to uh fix that up, so we're we're staying on top of those items as well as uh watching the mud that may be getting trapped. Out of the uh dig area, and so uh we're we're rolling through there with the street sweeper as needed.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, Echols Creek is a can of wine for stream and I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we're do, we're doing our best to.
Thanks.
Eva's set and free.
Super, thank you.
One project is that?
The new impound lot is being built at the Bayler.
Okay.
One.
I thought you said behind the Aliased.
The, no, behind the EVO spoiled building.
Oh, which is over by the Bayler?
Yes.
When you're pulling in the driveway, there's a little shed.
I was thinking of the Aliased stuff that. Oh six.
Here's all.
Oh, two forty five dash one.
Well, we did, that's, we put a cul-de-haut, we did all that work.
Right.
Yeah, that was my baby, that was when we started to put in that cul-de-haut, I'm like, oh, there's a bridge foundation in there. Just for that, anyway. Yeah, there used to be a bridge. Okay, any other questions for the acting city manager?
Yes, I have one, if I may, that's just any updates on the swimming pool.
The only update on the swimming pool is that we do not have an update yet, uh the draining and dying check is still being done, it's an iterative process and so um. Samantha has let me know that we will provide you with info as soon as we have it.
Perfect, I just wanted that on public record, so anyone could hear that, thank you.
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing included yet, we're still, we're still looking into it, uh neither the pool liner nor our own plumbing has been ruled out yet, so we'll, we will let you know.
There's, yes, sorry, I I have another question, um staffing. Lost three key employees, is there any news?
Um I actually, yeah, thank you, that was a bullet point that I forgot to put down and then remember, um so we have. Um, I actually, yeah, thank you. That was a bullet point that I forgot to put down and then remember, um, so we have hired a new uh, HR manager. They uh, started on Monday. Um, so Andy has been uh, doing a transitional training with them. Uh, Andy is our current HR manager, well, was our current HR manager. Um, so yeah, the transition with that has been going pretty smoothly. Um, Andy will now transition to um, the uh, events coordinator, which was their previous position. They're here for a few more weeks before they leave town. And so they said that they would take that doing on to help uh, you know, relieve some of the pressure that's going on with just multiple people trying to fill that role. Um, and with so many events going on right now, it's kind of been hard to have multiple people juggling that and keeping everything straight, so. Um, but yeah, that that is the only new hire as of this moment.
What's this person's name?
Uh, Kayleen Nelson. And so, yeah, like I said, they started Monday and then this coming Monday will be their first day fully taking on the role when Andy steps down.
Um, where has she come from?
I would love to tell you, but I cannot remember.
Utah.
Utah.
They rolled up and they put it on Facebook to ask for help moving in and like, oh, that's Samantha.
They were the ones on Facebook asking, yeah, right.
Okay, let Samantha help. Okay.
Yep, I was there and I helped a little bit as well. They're, it's great. I think they have three children and just fantastic, fantastic, fantastic for our community. So, and they seem pretty thrilled to be here and it was a pretty rainy day on Sunday when we were moving, so that didn't deter them. They were in good spirits, other than just completely inundated of a seven day trek coming up to Alcan to get here and as as I can relate to, I'll I'll just say that, so. Very grateful they're here and grateful to have them in our community, so.
Perfect. Thanks.
And they're a very musical family. I learned as I carried their piano up the stairs of the barn, so. Very, very musically inclined, so, and also another great addition to our community.
And I think they have cats.
Yes.
We have some other cat people. Cat and Colette.
More questions for manager?
You guys don't real sound like that.
I would like to see a report.
She, she put it up to the shit.
I'm gonna leave town. Here's what I want you to do.
Keep it, keep it going.
Okay, then I guess we move on to the city clerk's report.
I will not be as long with it, I promise. Um, I was going to to say that sometimes things slow down a little bit in the summer when everybody gets busy and leaves and whatever. But then you guys just gave me about six dates of things going on in the next two weeks. The eighth, the eleventh, the fourteenth, the eighteenth, and the twenty-third. So I'll make sure that we're all aware of all those dates again and I'll keep a good list and keep you guys informed of that. But the kind of the one that matters to us and me is the June eleven training. I spoke to Sonia today and uh, she's coming down, um, and it'll be at six o'clock next week. That's a week from today, six o'clock. Probably two to two and a half hours. Um, I told all the staff to boards and commissions to inform their board recommission members and the staffs. So it was important for them to come and learn that stuff too. Um, and it'll be on Zoom, so I think some of the council members might attend by Zoom and if you cannot attend at all, it will be recorded and we can get copies to be known, however, easy ways. And otherwise, I'll bring up those dates again pending agenda for you. But, um, oh, and and then whether or not we're gonna have the second meeting in June, which we should decide at pending agenda.
Six eighteen.
Yes. And that is all I have. I can answer questions, so. Kevin has some.
I don't have a question, but after your questions, I do just wanna add one additional item, so.
Folks have questions for the clerk? Councilmember Kinsman, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Yeah, so this is something that I'm gonna drag Susan and this is what I'm going out on my own. Um, um, so something Susan and I were discussing and we weren't sure whether, you know, it was an appropriate time to bring this up during city manager report or, well, I know definitely not pending agenda cuz Susan is not enjoying when we have conversations very pending agenda. Um, but uh, one thing that we have not necessarily ran into recently, um, but you know, uh, it may be worth revisiting our marijuana ordinances. Um, there has been a recent interest in bringing a marijuana business to town. Uh, Amanda met with them, I I met with them a little bit. They had a couple locations in mind. Um, they thought they had done their research, but they did not realize that our marijuana rules, while similar in some ways are much very different than um, both states and other communities. Uh, whereas like with the buffer distance, um, other communities and well, the state specifically is a door to property line measurement um, on the legal pedestrian path. Whereas our buffer is just a straight proximity from the property that wants to be the business. So for instance, um, um, like with uh, you know, I I won't call it any businesses, but there are businesses that liquor licenses and they can't be within a certain distance of the school district. But the way that it's measured is from their door down the pedestrian sidewalk across a crosswalk to the school property. And that is how the state defines the proximity. So that.
So not wide sight.
It is not at the profile, so.
Yeah.
Um, our code just says buffer.
For marijuana.
For marijuana. Um, it also is increased above what the state requires. The state requires a five hundred foot distance. Ours is a one thousand foot distance. Uh, we dug, we dug through some of the history and the minutes and things like that. And basically what we learned was there was concern from our lawyers that if we didn't observe the thousand foot, which is the federal regulation for school zones to not have drugs within, we may be at risk of losing federal funding. Well, we're we're losing federal funding even with law implications. And so I just know that we're constantly talking about um, revenue. And there has been interest to bring some that could bring revenue to town. And our current regulations have really restricted the locations. Um, I didn't bring the maps tonight. We do have maps that show where based on our regulations are allowed. We, you know, this is something that you guys want to discuss and bring up in a future agenda item. So not trying to create more work, hope Sam doesn't kill me for this.
Well, yeah, and don't push it out right now, but this is something, we kinda wanna see an ordinance come forward, somebody can ask for that.
Or either work session or discussions or just, we just thought that uh, it's been almost a decade since we passed those laws. We've yet, we've yet to get a establishment in town. We are in need of revenue. We all know it's pot in town, whether there's a store or not. And so um, and there there were some interesting comments in the minutes from some of the council members at the time that said, you know, they were concerned about doing this larger buffer, but maybe it was worth doing a larger buffer, see how it goes. And then we reconsider the rules in the future. And so
Maybe we're.
Typically, staff tries to promote people to come in to speak to the council for these sort of changes because it does have more weight when they come in. But also people that are doing certain, you know, things, what not even lead, but you know, people are concerned about showing their cards or coming in publicly when they're doing business transactions that aren't for sure yet. And so they had a little concern about that. And so I thought it might be worth just at least bringing this to your attention that it may be worth looking into.
Yeah.
So that was all.
Thank you.
That's why I turned Susan into it.
Exactly. Tag along over here.
You think that's gonna save you?
Exactly.
She's.
Okay.
Okay, so under correspondence, we have one correspondence about a blood drive.
And I did that today and it was painless.
Excellent.
Because all I did was sign up.
Yeah, they don't take the blood out, they just own your name and twenty second. Yeah, I think it's great. Lots of people sign up and uh, is this something that would also get advertised in the city's public notice email?
Well, Vivian just sent it to me and asked me to send it.
We put it out on Facebook. Again, I don't know if it went out on email. I assume it did, but I can't, I can't tell you that it did, so.
I think that'd be a good
Yeah.
thing to notice.
I will do.
Thank you. Great. Any, any comments about correspondence? Right, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution zero six two five one six, resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a sole source contract with emulsion products, Alaska to purchase chip seal oil.
Here. There. I moved to approve resolution zero six two five one six, resolution, resolution of the city of uh, the, or resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter this whole store contract with emulsion product, Alaska and purchase chip seal oil.
This is second, it's been moved and seconded. It's Astor and Adams. Uh, Councilmember Astor, you must speak to her person.
Sure, yeah, I will. It seems obvious that um, staff is, well, we obviously already approved the funding. Move forward on this in our twenty-five budget, so um, getting on the purchase of materials and starting chip seals, definitely uh, overdue, um, as far as it being a sole source, I think uh, from, from the information provided that the selected uh, company provides everything we need and understand our location well and um, it sounds like uh, the amount we need is going to be um, part of that discussion, but like ten thousand gallons is the cut, or no, no less than ten thousand gallons, so that's all part of the discussion, right?
Yeah, so my, my uh,
Can, can we let him speak and let uh, the second speak and then?
So it uh, yeah, I I it seems uh, appropriate to allow uh, staff to move forward with, well, the city management forward to makes that deal with uh, emulsion motion product. Yeah.
Councilmember Adams.
I just have one question, just as, um, I don't know how this works with road crews in session, but do the potholes get fixed first and then it's sealed over, um?
So, yeah, so the the amount that was budgeted for doesn't necessarily allow for us to do entire new section of the road or areas that haven't um been chip sealed in the past, so we're not, we're, we're not going to be doing new chip sealing, uh, areas that aren't currently chip sealed. Um, the plan for this year with the amount of product that we can get is we're going to be bidding um, high traffic areas um, and areas with historic bad pothole use, uh, or bad potholes, um. We, when they came to town, we kinda showed them what our different uh, issues of concern were. They let us know, you know, what we could probably get done with the amount of, uh, with the budget that we have. And so we will be, we will be doing sec-, we will be doing large sections of different roads. Um, but this is going to be mostly a um, a a maintenance job. Whereas our hope is that we can prove to the council and community with the work that we do this summer that um, if we can keep up on this maintenance and continue to hopefully get chip seal uh, money in budgets going forward, then we can repair what we have and then expand upon that. Um, so yeah, so this, this year would basically just be uh, trying to catch up on some of the deferred maintenance of the existing chip seal rolls, runs, which would include fixing problems.
Thank you. And does that address what you wanted to add when I cut you off?
I don't remember.
Sorry.
I think I think it was.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, I was asking about, probably off the eighty thousand, but we had approved, I guess, but all it would be used.
Are there other questions about chip sealing? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Do some chip seal.
Uh, we must.
We'll get some oil.
Yeah. Uh, no unfinished business. We have new miscellaneous business, so there's the it's been two weeks. Um, quest for council action to protest or wave protest for the tiny wings liquor license renewal. Would anyone like to make a motion to get it on the table?
Probably to wave protest would be a good motion to get it on the table.
You back with us?
I'll make a motion to waive the right to protest the renewal for liquor license for tiny wings, DVA, anchor bar, for a liquor store.
Also. Hey, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Um, Councilmember Manny, do you want to comment?
Um, it looks in their letter like there actually is a purchase happening finally, um, so I am going to move it forward. If this purchase does not happen, however, I would not approve anything more of this. Um, that property needs to be dealt with. It's now demolition instead of being able to rebuild. Um, but it does look like having the liquor license is in integral to the sale that they have worked out, so I would like to see this property get sold and dealt with and something else put there, so I'm not that, I'm not gonna protest this time, but um, we certainly have given a lot of leeway on this property and I'm ready to see some action taken.
Um, Councilmember Astor.
Uh, yeah, I agree with everything that uh, Councilmember Randy has just said and that the fact that they're caught on their taxes, they're, they're, so they're yeah, a good standing for the city of this.
You drink, yeah.
I have a question. Um, that was one of my questions is are, is, are they caught up with their bills?
And their obligations. They did make all their payments.
Okay, that's, that they were.
And do we have recourse if the sale doesn't go through to to rescind their liquor license?
So the renewals come up every two years, but I think you guys can act at any time, so it might be proved for me to put it on pending agenda. And and we can revisit it every so often. You guys can even mention it at pending agenda on a meeting and say, hey, has that happened? I mean, we might know if it's happened because we'll see action, but um.
Well, just to go back, I mean, though most of you could do would submit a protest to the state saying that they haven't followed through with what you requested and so that doesn't necessarily say that that the state or anybody would take action on that.
Right.
But it would be on record.
Yeah.
And then one of the primary concerns was the fact that they're not safe for pub, the public to be in that building right now as far as fire marshal.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, there hasn't been a revisit to it since the fire marshal at the time basically said he will not allow that building to reopen and so obviously nothing has changed since that point. Um, so any new use of that property is going to require a major renovation and my understanding is it is gonna be a tear down and rebuild. But the other, the other concern is that if the license is protested, then the state could then take the license out of Cordova. And then there's no guarantee that it would ever come back, yeah, so.
Let's not do that.
And they've put in waivers with the state each year waiving the fact that they have not been openly required a amount of time.
Required to be open a certain amount every year to maintain your license, but you can request waivers due to different hardships. But they are, as Susan said, multiple years into requesting those waivers.
Yeah.
I agree. Total, yeah.
Uh, one other question, might be completely off topic, but I, we've had influx of people from all over in the summer and I'm just, that, I'm concerned in that building for squatters. Has that ever been an issue or not?
It's not something that's been identified when we've asked public safety about it, so it's not something that they've responded to as an issue. So while I understand the concern about it, it's not something we yet see any issues with. Yeah.
And the owners are here, I mean, one of the owners lives here, so I mean. So they had a food truck in the parking lot all last summer.
Yeah.
Oh, that's where our bit was. Oh, that's where he was?
Yeah, he was in front of the anger.
Uh.
But he also had a late start and it was a bad season, so.
Councilmember Kinsman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just, I'm glad we brought up what the former uh marshal had stated on the. Property that there's no appetite in opening it in its current state, so I would support that, it's not in any position to be open in its current state, so. And I, sounds like that still stands, so I'm good with this.
Any? Comments, any round two comments? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign?
So you guys are okay that if I tell A, B, C board, like, Amfo, I have to reply to them tomorrow, I'm going to say that that, um. The, the ability to use that building is still on hold until a fire marshal.
We don't object to the license, but we do not.
We still have that same one from last time.
And as I was just saying, I think that's what we said last time also, we don't, we don't object to the license, but the building, we will not allow to be reused in a current state.
Okay. So I will say that on the statement to Amfo.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so pending agenda.
Ooh, I'll just mark this vision.
Oh, I'm sorry, then. No, pending agenda, and then, oh, I'm sorry, you shouldn't, my bad, sorry.
You wanna pass the gas?
Sorry, man.
For him, I guess he wants. Just with.
I'm acting like, I'm acting like a co-miror or something.
Pushing, pushing, pushing.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so we. What was the one we just talked about?
Well, we had lots of things, yeah.
So, marijuana.
Marijuana, right.
To read this guy.
Right, yeah.
I think that would be a good idea.
That's a, that's a work session, I think, that needs to be a full work session to look at the history of it and, and the ordinances and. Yeah.
But it's been ten years since the last decisions were made.
Yeah, so I think we passed the original in fifteen, is that what you said, and then we updated in seventeen?
Yeah, that sounds right, but it took like four meetings because we had the.
Yeah, we, we, we went, it's, the ordinance had a whole bullet of uh, multiple meetings to get to the final passage, so I mean. I think there was a temporary moratorium put in place. And then the final rules were adopted, I, the end of seventeen or the beginning of eighteen, so.
Holly was going around her communities and they were making sure that everybody was. Ready in case it, you know, the state just went crazy with marijuana businesses. And so we did the moratorium and then we did the ordinance and we talked about it for a while also, um. And then, of course, nothing went crazy in Cordova, but everywhere else did, but gradually, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not to say that us changing this is going to just bring in a, a, you know, uh, uh, yeah, or even a story, you know, I'm just, I just. We felt it was appropriate that there was, there was serious interest.
Yeah.
But due to the restrictions on where they could be, it basically eliminated their possibility to come to town, yeah.
So do we want to schedule a work session? Is that one?
Sure, sure, I'm sure so previously what is supposed to discuss, were there work sessions, did the public come in and provide their comments, or was there anything?
That was, that was public comment, I mean, I'll dredge up all the history for you guys.
But there was public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was even an initiative petition that we voted on. And it overwhelmingly failed. Which, because we had had a vote, well, the statewide vote. Passed. And then Cordova supported that when it was in front of them locally. And it's been a long time.
Okay, so what do we want to? Do for a date?
Oh, I, I don't know if we should set a date, I think we sat by any time to date all this up and do, because I think if that's what.
Yeah, I don't know, I think, yeah, okay.
Give us some time and let's work it in, I mean, we, we've got a lot of other important issues coming up, I just wanted to bring this up as a general idea to at least. Maybe have a conversation and compare.
So on item thirteen, do we get? Wait, no, nevermind, we could take that off, but we can't, not yet, just looking for things to.
So we need to talk about. The next meeting. Oh, yeah, yeah, all right, um, so I'm adding. Marijuana.
And then the tiny wings.
Oh, actually, number eight, can number eight come off? We sort of.
Yeah, that was handled at the last meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, especially because thirteen is on there then, so eight can go away, agree with me?
Okay, so now we're talking about, um.
Route eighteen, um. I don't know of anything right now.
Well, we have that mug of.
Right.
At six, right?
Five.
Aye.
Five to seven, I think it's, that was average I was four, with the thinking that if we were, uh, yes.
Okay.
If we were gonna have a council meeting, then we would do that right afterwards, yeah.
Yeah, not that we need to, but if we decided to, it would make rolling right back.
Okay, um, the other thing I'm thinking of is that Amanda's planning always meets on the. Time we to get stuff on the third, on the second council meeting, but there's nothing on your meeting that would need to come up.
You know, they're on two, so.
Um.
Uh, what's that, Kim, did you?
So we have no.
I was just confirming with Amanda that, that being on their meeting next week, ask the county.
Okay, okay.
For pending agenda, I would still like to see an update for Q one finances. Alright, I believe the audit is wrapping up or completed. So I just, I don't want this to fall by the wayside, I want to make sure that we're accurately in having. A work session to review, even if it's, you know, a minimal work session, I just would like an update with the intent. That this helps reduce the stress as we get into October, November in the budget cycle.
So did we decide to cancel the second June meeting? And if anything pops up, I'll go for a special, I'll make sure I get for you guys. If it's anything.
Not, I, I can be in favor of that, but that's still, I'm. If we can replace that or substitute that with this work session, the finance work session, or at least hear back on that, that's. Um, what I'd like after that, now we're in Q three and we'll need a Q one and Q two update, so. I, I would, I would like to have our Q one updates stay in Q two and carry that on.
We need to hear from Cheryl what she thinks is.
Yeah.
Possible.
She's having some.
Right.
Absolutely, abso, and, and I can be behind that and I can even, given that, I can get behind the. We have a combined Q one, Q two, but that just means I want to. It to be. Early on in Q three, like July, like not August, not September. So.
Yeah, we can do a session before the meeting on the July second. Um.
Well, we'll have to wait for Sam and Cheryl to.
Abso, absolutely, and I can support that.
On there, we will follow up with.
Okay. So no meeting on Wednesday?
On, now on the eighteen.
On June eighteen.
On June eighteen.
Correct.
Except for the mug of, right, yeah.
I'm just gonna chime in, I don't know what conversations have been had on this or not, but I'm just maybe timing wise, um. I have number two probably needs to be addressed. Soon or later, because my understanding is twenty-six is the end of the current CBA, and so if council wants to be involved in that for item two. And there needs to be any ordinance changes, so you know, that's why to take some time, so. Not saying it needs to come immediately, but.
I know, I don't know how that got on.
I mean, it's sooner than later and maybe needs to be discussed at least.
I support that.
I feel like the issue was. A few managers ago, not including council at all in the CBA. And then we changed that procedure drastically and now council.
Yeah, I mean, that's very.
Very involved, but it's not in code. It's by resolution, but. And, and I can see that falling away if we have a change in administration and memories go away. But that has been the procedure of late and it's been working, but if somebody wants to put it in code, that's a different story.
I want to see it in code. As the clerk changes potentially in the future, yes, this administration council changes. It just needs to be in code.
So is that something you need to, that the? You need to get in touch with Holly about to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll talk about this, discuss it internally again, like, see, see when that needs to be, when we can bring it up for additional discussion to determine how to move forward with it. I just saw that it's been on here since twenty-three.
Yeah.
Which I assume was roughly when the last one was approved and council decided they wanted to talk about it more, so.
Yeah.
If it's on here and it's already been addressed through resolution, maybe we can drop it, but.
Oh, no, it sounded like. Or she.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, maybe, you know, plan on having a conversation sometime in the next several months to figure out how we need to move forward if we do.
Any else for pending agenda? Good, okay. You're clear, clerk?
Yes. Okay.
Alright, then let's move on to audience participation. Any members of the audience want to come forward? Wash that.
Hi, Daddy. This doesn't have to be. Something that's been, friends before.
No, this can be any item, anything.
This is an open public comment.
Yeah.
For any topic.
Yes, any topic, it does not have to be an agenda item. On it.
My name's Dottie, written, uh, two, four, five, E, I, drive and owner of the netbook. And uh, I did want to mention that we're trying to proceed on construction of the netbook and with. It's very difficult hurdles concerning remediation. And um, we're just trying to figure out if there's a way. To um, have access to certain funds. That are only available to government agencies, nonprofits, or tribal groups, but um. If we can align ourselves as a community. Organization of some kind and align ourselves with the city somehow, I just wanna put it out there, um. I can help build the new cabin, uh, Cedar's Cabin, but they're gonna charge me. To remediate this, this site, and it's, I feel like it's not, and. Just knowing that for others that are wanting to invest in the community and create and fill these holes. Anybody who holds any of that dirt out of the ground is gonna face some of the problems that we're addressing right now. And I want to put that out there. We really want to do this project right now because of the finances, it's really putting in jeopardy, but. In two weeks, cranes are arriving, also just letting you know that construction is, we're trying to move forward with the remediation, but. There's been so many hurdles of it that. Um, in getting, uh, getting to this point, we're kind of all ready to the point where all the things that were put in place that were supposed to start. Actually, April first, are having to do now, we're gonna have to, I don't know, it's. Uh. Just letting you know that and hoping that we can somehow align ourselves with the city in some way, that we can make ourselves eligible for their funding to help. With this remediation and setting up some type of precedence for the future for other businesses who want to invest in their community and rebuild as a. As an independent business owner.
And you have a meeting set up on Friday with uh, DEC and EPA folks, right, so, and I, um, with my economic development district role and maybe you were participating in that also, yeah, so.
Yeah, so thank you, I appreciate your. Um, uh, being able to try to come to this and maybe see if there's some type of. Way we can align ourselves and help for, for the future of other businesses that want to try to fill our holes on this street.
Well, it does seem like it's. A community problem, I mean, I feel like it, it's tough to ask one business to, to solve something that is. Residual from a past age that other businesses would also experience, and it's not necessarily public property, but. In terms of public benefit and supporting development. There, there could be a role for it, maybe, so.
We, we need the city to align with us as that we are. Uh, we provide community service to our community, we have this community space and. Mayor Smith, so, um, thank you.
Dottie, have you thought about, I mean, is the voters' guild a nonprofit? Um, and is it possible to align with them? To help with the construction and then possibly opening it up for them to utilize some space in there? As part of the partnership, I mean, is that one way to tie in and maybe get some funding through them? I don't know if they're a nonprofit, I don't know. What the status of they are.
The issue is that the land has to be.
No, I know, but she's looking at getting funding and a nonprofit, being tied to a nonprofit would help get some funding, so is that an option?
I mean, your, your development district can be a fiscal sponsor, but I think, but the. If, for money to be spent on a specific site, the land has to be. Maybe in public ownership or I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I mean, that's what we're looking to on, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, but, um.
Yeah.
Um, just even the threat for it, you know, and if it's just that, it's, it's, there are kinds of site. A site collectively in terms of the community, but I'm the only one that's actively.
Right.
Did. So I look forward to the netbook, but uh, yeah.
We do too.
Very, very big hurdles to make beforehand, and we'll have a community space. Thank you for speaking.
Thanks, Dottie, for persevering. Other audience participation? Since you asked.
Thanks. I've been thanking for, Samantha Parks and Act Director, thank you for saying all the great things, I just wanted to thank you guys for all your help and me. And I also just wanted to tell the community that my door is always open, I would rather someone come in to my office and talk to me than. Um, have, you know, a lot of things flying around that are not factual. So I just wanted to invite the community to come in and, and hear, hear my story, I think there's a lot of people that have come in recently and I've changed their mind. And so I just have seen so much support. From the community, which I'm not really surprised, um, it's a great space and all the spaces that we're dealing with right now. So I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support and the community too.
We really admire you in terms of taking this on and doing as much as you can to meet this worry, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Excellent. I'm seeing, we, we, Dottie going around the table with council comments. So, Jamie, I'm gonna, Councilmember Astor, pick on you.
I'm just up to see if they'll relax.
I reverse, turn that around this time.
Oh, well, that always breaks down, they're giving us all very good two meanings, um. I guess it's, uh, since our last meeting, um, uh, and the decisions we had to make, it's been pretty interesting, uh, talking to the members of the community and people's feelings, but, um. So the decisions we made, um. I, I guess, uh, my one message to the community is, um. Which we've all said many times is get involved, I'd love to see more people come in, even with meetings like this, where there isn't a whole lot on the agenda, come to the meetings, ask questions, bring things up. You know, this is the point here at every single meeting for uh, au- audience participation, where you can bring anything up you want. And um, make us aware of any concerns, desires, and needs, and we really wish people to be more of that. So, um, yeah, I, I, I would love to see people get more informed about everything that we have been doing, have planned to do. History that this council has, has, and decisions they made in the past and just get, get more on, on what, what we're doing. That's my plea.
Councilmember Kinsman? We're going a little linearly and that all is snapped in the, moving up.
No, I appreciate that, um, right off, thank you, uh. Community member Dottie for coming in and, uh, consistently coming in, I hope that. After your meeting on Friday, you can come be, come to staff and if you need anything from council. If you need anything from council, I would absolutely support us putting another. You know, ad hoc meeting on, even if it's solely just to address something for this project, it. I would love to see it move forward, whatever we can do to support it. And uh, so thank you, uh, Samantha, thank you for your work with Parks and Rec and being creative. Um, I will be the first to admit that. There are a lot of other pressing needs in our community and I think we've been addressing that. Uh, from a standpoint with our work sessions and our top priorities and Skater's Cabin is not on the top priority, does not mean it's not important to our community. Uh, just means that roads and sewer and water and all of those things, uh, that, that core infrastructure. Safe, public safety, in my opinion, uh, need to be addressed before we get to do. And address and put a priority on some of the public, uh, recreation spaces. Um, I think that was a great comment, councilmember Zastro referring to just public comment. This is the time for the public, these, if you see a, a light agenda, this is the perfect time for you to get out. And come speak the needs that you see in our community, where, where it will be far more engaged af- than after. A hard pressed agenda council meeting, so please, please, please let us know. And on top of that, please, please, please come get engaged, there, there's a couple open seats on some of the boards and. And every year, there's an opportunity for you to run, to be on council, which is great, please do it, please consider it. Now's the time for you to be thinking about that of, can I take this on and can I do this? And I think it's just an opportunity for every citizen to. Step up and do that, it's not, it's, it's a time commitment, absolutely, to do it right, it's a time commitment. But your eyes will be opened, you get to see what it takes to run this community and it is community. And as I've done some traveling and in-state and out-of-state and I'll continue to do traveling. It's, it's a incredible place that we get, we as a community get to call our home, and so. Um, just thank you for the engagement that we do receive. Uh, it seems like it's always contingent on some kind of contentious agenda item, but. Whatever it takes, I'm a proponent of, if that's what we have to do, get something contentious, contentious on the agenda, then great, we'll do that to get some. Community uh, outreach and input, but overall, thank you and then thank you to staff. I'm glad that Sam is able to take some time off and enjoy some PTO and time off, so hopefully she's enjoying that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Um, first of all, I appreciate the fact that this is a less stressful meeting than the last, um, and um, not having to make such. Um, difficult decisions and um, as I was sitting here listening to everybody talk, was reflecting that. For me, this is a privilege to sit here, um, and um, but I'm not uh. Immune to the stress that um, it involves, so I, I, I appreciate today's agenda and I'm excited about this new HR family. That has come to town, especially if there are um, children involved and. Keeping our numbers at the school up, um, that's great, um, Susan, thank you for, whenever I come into your office, you give me the time I need. So I really, really appreciate that and, um, Kristin, thank you for being proactive with Murkowski's visit and I'm. I'm actually going in the opposite direction this weekend, I'm going towards Washington C and so I'm sorry to miss it, um, but um. Show the flag. Um, and bring it to the high school, let her see where it needs repairs, um, and Dottie. Keep coming because we really wanna see this building go up, we really wanna see your business thrive, um, it already has, but. You've outgrown your space, so, um, whatever you need, I'm there for you.
Thanks, Councilmember Manning?
Um, just things to staff, um, it, it's a lot to put these together, the information that we need, I understand that and I appreciate it. Dottie, besides already signing my paychecks over to you immediately, let us know what else we can do to help, um. Uh, yeah, that, the, the reclamation on. Is a difficult, difficult process and I understand that intimately, um. What was left, you know, I, I appreciate the history of this community, but um, it's. There were, there were some not so nice things left behind as well, so it's, it's an expensive process to, to move beyond that, um. And yeah, thanks for staff that comes to the meetings, we appreciate seeing you and uh, on all your hard work.
Awesome, well, thanks everyone. This weekend, most, one more motion?
We agree.
Okay. Yeah.
Sweet.
Well done.